Follow the meeting to order.
As required by the. Seventy-five, I've noticed this meeting was provided on January twelfth, that will come through by publication in the express times in the Hurry County Democrat and posting of Fed notice in nation building on the same date. Mayor Darsing.
Here.
Mr. Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bean.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Yeah. Stanford. Like. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands. That house tonight, huh? There's wife's here. Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from August seventeenth. They really make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, second, anybody have any corrections, deletions, questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Darsing.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yeah.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the treasurer's report for September bill list and interim bill list. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, anything?
No. Oh, no, I want to talk about this interest, but I can do that later.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Darsing.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yeah.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we accept the tax collectors taxes or reports for August. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Darsing.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Yes.
Police Department report. Chief, you have anything to add, you wanted to say, or?
Uh. I just wanted to. Does anyone have any questions regarding your report?
No.
No. Well, certainly, obviously, the overtime hours happen correspond with the workman's comp hours.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, that and uh. Crossing guard. Uh, now, the injury and uh.
Injury that happened on the job, or?
No.
No.
Okay. No, and unfortunately, it's got news yesterday that uh, they'll be out an additional three weeks. So, we are still training the other new crossing guards, so uh, it's. It'll be.
Which one are you training? We had two to train, right?
No, just, we just hired one.
Teresa Brown?
Yes.
Okay, next one you're training?
Yes.
Okay.
And uh, well, there was uh, the uh, vacation. Yes. Usually it's not that much vacation, September, but there was quite a bit of vacation.
Are you paying overtime for police officers to cross in? Is that where it started, right?
Uh, I try not to, and usually I don't have to, but um. I mean, two crossing guards did standby, it's uh, been a little bit.
I mean, it's getting to the point, like, would we be better off? Hiring. A second. Crossing guard for Greenwich Street. When one's off, there's still one there, and if somebody doesn't show up somewhere else, they can go. Might be cheaper in the long run, just to hire another full-time crossing guard. Work them every day and put them where you need them, and you only have to deal with the one location. Am I talking crazy or what?
We, well, so I had that backup position, I didn't get any applicants, uh, we did have uh, uh.
Well, yeah.
Was not interested, I.
He wasn't interested in part-time, but it might make sense if he's interested in full-time to hire him. And then use him where we need him, or have two at that location, it's a busy location anyway, correct?
It is busy, yeah. Greenwich Street does.
Yeah.
Sammy's been there and uh, doing a good job over the years, but uh.
Just a thought.
If you, if you uh, if you want me to uh.
To you, it's just, I'm just throwing out a thought. I just thinking if it's deeper in the long run, like, maybe do that.
Uh. The, I don't know, should I bring it up now, the, the question last month, that one of the residents came up and asked about the, the no parking in front of mailboxes. Unable to drive. Uh, so I looked at that, the. I don't think it would be feasible, there is. The overall length of that road. Uh. Once you minus the, the intersections and the driveways that people cannot park uh. At, there is um. Three thousand, or excuse me, five thousand, six hundred and forty-eight feet. If you take away all the mailboxes, that's in taking about two thousand feet away. So you leave people parking uh, to three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two feet roughly. And that, that street, there's a lot of parking on that street. I guess, it, it's one of the longer streets, and it's the longest street in that building, so. Um, I don't think that that would be, but uh, you wanted me to look into.
Yeah.
That's the uh, the number, there's nothing on state law that people can't park in front of a mailbox. Um, it's only, there might be towns that may. I don't know many.
Well. Somebody's got to give response to those people, if you want to send one, or you're going to send one, or?
On, on the side note, and, and I, I'll make this clear, I'm certainly all aiming to the subject matter. But I certainly took the drive-through to particularly look at the house that was complaining. And my suggestion to them about just parking to the left of the mailbox works perfect at that property. You know, not all of them, but if that one particular one where the mailbox is located, well, you just park to the left of it and. You know, problem solved for that house. Not all the houses' mailboxes are set up that way, but in their particular situation, so, but I have to agree with the chief, I don't think that there's. Any way to prevent parking in front of a mailbox.
I think we might have suspected that might be a sport, that it was not a very feasible, but we at least looked into it.
Yeah.
But shouldn't the postal. Postman, woman. Get out of the truck and hand deliver it, because technically, isn't their motto that they will deliver it in wind, rain, snow? Can we include cars?
Our, our postmaster said that the uh, if they had to get out, they would never get the mail delivered, they had to get out there in a mailbox.
Well, we're all root, they don't have to.
And.
Actually, they didn't deliver mine, I wanted to speak because of the work on Maple Drive.
Yeah, you're right, some clothes, right?
You did every other day, it's one day, they're coming down, but.
Uh. Okay, with the. Moving on from that, uh, the truck ordinance that was, uh, the weight limit increase that was passed of the secondary or last meeting. Uh, I had contacted the court because I wanted to make sure. To know what the fine was, just, I just wanted to have an idea this because oftentimes on stops, when we issue summonses or the driver to ask how much. Usually our input is that the court deals with the fines, we don't deal with fines, why not? However, I wanted to know, and through uh, numerous correspondence with the court. I was told that the fine is only a hundred and fifty dollars for that uh, truck ordinance, which is uh. Pretty light for uh, I, I think in ordinance, um. I know nobody are just uh, adopted theirs, and I heard that theirs, not saying that we have to do this, but theirs is a thousand. Big, big difference there. Um, I think if we're writing truck ordinance tickets and it's all only a hundred and fifty dollars and no points.
Yeah.
You're not gonna.
Well, that's kind of what I, at least, I knew we were rewriting the ordinance, but I, one of our objectives, or objectives in rewriting the ordinance was to double or triple the fine.
So when I was looking at the ordinance, I looked under penalties, under our traffic section, and what I found. Uh, was different, what I found, it says first offense is a fine not less than two hundred and fifty, no more than five hundred. I wanted to talk to uh, the attorney-labary, I guess, to ask what he thought about this, and then the second offense is five hundred to a thousand. Third offense is uh, not less than a thousand. But, when I'm, I, I spoke to the judge today, and um. He, he went off what the court administrator was telling me, and that was that it's in the system, it's only a hundred and fifty dollars, however. I don't see anything supporting that in ordinance book, and she's just going back to a, a, a court program. So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at it right here from our ordinance, it says exactly what you said.
The judge said if we want to change it, we have to change it in the ordinance, but I said I'll talk to you first, as you're.
Or, but it's in the. This is the, what it is, is we have to match. Only my new physician has helped me out with this. We have to match our ordinance with whatever the ticket number is to put it into the system. So that when they look up the, the judge looks up the, that will come up, apparently that's not coming up right now.
Correct, the, the court has a different system that they, when they want an ordinance entered into their system, they have to go through the AOC, the O C. Determines whether they're allowed to put in, it doesn't supersede state law, then they'll put into the system, and then when the court punches it off, it. Auto-populates, but she's saying that this auto-populating is, is giving this one hundred and fifty dollar fine, it's nothing, I, I can't even look at it because. That's in the court system that I don't, I don't have access to that, so um, it's kind of going around in circles, that's why I want.
Well, again, you could, all, all their court has to do is report to the state. And change whatever it is, it, it, I think, to be honest, I think it's that simple, only because it got done in books right now.
We're just not even sure where their name, number came from.
Right, exactly, so the point is, once. They can do it right there.
Yeah, I mean, this is from two thousand and five, this has been on your books, so, I mean. I could send a letter to the judge, you know, and just say, hey, or the court administrator saying, here's a copy of our ordinance, it's been in effect since two thousand and five, let us know if there's anything. I mean, it sounds like it's, they got to input it on their end.
Yeah, they have to input it on their end.
Yeah, like, maybe they have to update it in the, in the AOC.
Yeah, maybe they've got the previous ordinance, but I mean, you know. It's been around for a while, twenty years.
But uh, regardless, uh, we're past the, the summer period, so the uh, options for uh, I sent out, they can start writing that, and be, threw in a couple today under that ordinance, so. So.
Also, Rich, didn't you mention last month that they were downgrading? The court, the judge was downgrading?
Uh, yes.
So have we resolved that, that we don't want them doing that?
So I spoke to the judge, the judge said uh, he understands, um, I spoke to the prosecutor before, I spoke to the judge. Uh, there were some discrepancies there, so I reached back out to prosecutor, and we haven't called back yet, but I just want to uh, confirm with him with the. My conversation with the judge and kind of zero tolerance with, yeah. Um, and drivers, truckers that, that fight those payments, so hopefully that's uh, going to be rectified and. And I won't know that until next court date to see what the numbers come back as, or, you know.
Okay.
However, it's going to be different now, Bob. If we're writing the ordinance, I don't know, I don't know what the, these truckers are going to do, I don't know if they're going to say. All right, we're not fighting it because it's not a points violation, we're just going to pay the fine, or if they're going to still fight it and.
That's why we got to get the, the fines up.
Yes. So are we rewriting a new ordinance? Or, or updating that one from two thousand and five to up to five?
Well, no, it's updated, they just don't have it in the court system, this is.
Well, we're at two, what are we at, two fifty there?
Not less than two fifty for first offense, second offense is not less than five hundred or more than a thousand, third offense, fine not less than a thousand.
So first offense being two fifty and five hundred.
Right.
Okay.
Which, there's another thing, I asked the court administrator, I said, this is a court appearance required, or is it something that they involved in pay? She said it's not a court appearance required, which, if by ordinance is sliding scale, that means the judge would have to determine what he wants to charge him. And. So we have to change the ordinance, so it's this mandatory. Or appearance? That's what I wanted to be on with.
Well, I, what the chief's saying is, because it's not, it's not a two hundred and fifty dollar fine, so, you know, if it's just a two hundred and fifty dollar fine, there's no appearance because they can plead guilty and send it to fifty. Because it's a sliding scale, they should have to appear, I don't know why they wouldn't, because each, even a first offense is two fifty to five hundred, so, I don't know how they're.
They're handling it.
So they're determining it on their own. And, and, but, and I mean, I just, I just don't understand where this one is going. There's support, there's nothing in our ordinances that say a, a fine is one fifty.
Right.
I just can't believe that some of the companies that are going through. Aren't getting on their drivers' backs, but unless these drivers are just paying the fines and not telling their boss.
Right.
Because something like, there's like this freight system, I see their trucks all the time, C R England's back all the time.
Saw on Green River.
As big as I've seen, like, there for a while was mostly independent, now I see it's actually company, trucking companies. And trucking companies, like, I'm sure they're not paying those fines on behalf of the drivers, I'm assuming the driver just doesn't even tell the employer and pay it and. What they don't know won't hurt them.
No way.
That's why I say, is there any way we can write the, the company, you know, or?
Mike?
Yeah, I think I already checked on that.
Yeah. Because. But I did notice this week. Obviously, there's no trucks on Maple Drive because of the roads, things. I didn't see many coming down. South Main and having detour. Did you notice that when you were working that day at all?
South, nah, not real south.
But as soon as they opened the road back up at five o'clock, they started coming, so they are communicating.
One seventy-three in, in Moore Glen were uh, they were. Uh, pretty busy, I think, was that yesterday with the uh, truck that this got.
Yeah.
There, yeah, it was a mess.
There was two, that the one that tried to make the right? Yeah, 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 I saw that, Soul for Me, it was quite the.
So they, they do must talk, because like I said, truck traffic was down, as soon as roads open again, they started coming off of seventy-eight down South Main, so.
I'm, yeah.
So, I'm, what I'm saying is, I guess if they do get tickets, they should get around, yeah. But, anyway, anything else?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay, thanks, chief. Joe, anything, DPW?
Just two things, uh, first on is, uh, as I reported, Paul stopped the two thousand eight pickup truck, we had to replace the rear end. It was over for brakes and stuff, we found the rear ends out, that's it. Well, we use pickup truck all the time, it's got ninety-eight thousand miles, I think, I find a huge rear. Um, so, we're going to have to start putting that on the list of, look for replacements, and that's the chief's plan, and that's in the same boat, we get pickup trucks, what they're making available is available. And, that's to take them when we can get them, so we'll talk about that a bunch of time. And that, only had a, one guy with uh, overtime, and that was for the field hockey event out at the Thomas Stewart Park for six hours.
That's it, unless anybody else has any questions.
I don't have anybody, any questions, yeah, thanks, Joe. Lisa, you have anything you want to add, or?
Nothing, nothing.
Anybody have any questions or issues with the?
Lisa, the insurance renewal, any timeframe? That, you know, we're coming up to that time of year, will be?
It's, it's in um, our current agent's hands right now, so we'll have something in advance of next year, but. That's, yeah, they'll, they'll give us quotes and then we can make a decision. The only thing, Bob, that I think might be um, an action item other than what is on um, the agenda is the information that I got from John Mooney and John Dragoits in terms of that. Potential bonding for the dioxin. Not that that has to be done tonight, but it's much better information than we thought, we, we were thinking it would be. You know, around the ten thousand dollar mark to facilitate that bond, it won't pay, so that's good.
The correctly, problem.
Right, right, for uh.
Yeah, I wish, now I wish Mike was here because I, I'm curious to see when Franklin Township's going to start, that I thought they mentioned it was an overwinter thing. And it would be great to have the same group overwinter, not interfere with the farmer and all that good kind of stuff. So, I, we can probably put it off for a month, but not, we need to, yeah, find out what's going on there, so that we can get it done here.
And Jeff, they get his water, you know? So, they won't make any water.
Seven oh nine Beacon, I think.
Oh, they weren't?
No.
Seven oh nine Beacon, I mentioned to Lisa, Gary reports that there's cats all over there, the people, and they moved out, left their cats behind.
Oh, boy. That's the kid that keeps on giving.
So. You should go and contact the man and see what we can do about it. That is Lisa?
Yeah.
And everybody done, any question for some guy? Zoning and code enforcement, do you have anything there that you want to discuss there, Paul?
Uh, no, just briefly, I mean, obviously, you can see. The zoning commits and stuff like that, but what he's working on in the back, he's got a, a list here, and he's actually probably shy a couple. Um, but one of the newest ones that i- is on his radar is eight fifty-seven Route fifty-seven.
Right.
And I don't know if you all drive by that at all, but that's. It used to be Suzuki Motorcycle Dealership, it was a dance thing, it was this, it was that, but somebody, and it's been a while, probably a little tardy in getting to it. Has just parked all kinds of large contractor equipment, right on the lot. Um, it's in disarray, he's repairing some, I don't know if it's a repair shop or what, regardless, it's a, a non-approved use.
Okay.
So this is another new project that he's going to go after that is probably going to take some time to get worked on amongst all the others that he's currently working on.
Anything else? Oh, what, what happened with the hide, hideaway, I saw court where that vehicle was supposed to be removed within a week?
I was just going to give you an update on that, so uh, the officer went to court for that, and the judge basically told him that he's going to hold the, or the summonses that he got. Uh. Told him that he had to pay the township for the mowing, and uh, he said he was going to have the camper move by Saturday.
Yeah. That's two Saturdays.
Yeah, but it's Saturday.
That was last Saturday, so I did speak to the judge today, and I asked him about it, I said, Judge, uh, either we're going to issue another ordinance, or are you going to take care of this when? Uh, you know, he comes back for court, and he asked uh, to have it, uh, he'll take care of it when he comes back for the court to answer to those two charges, so. Um. I guess I'll wait to see, but the problem is, I don't think they're to schedule a court date. So, I don't want to sit there and wait, and I think that if we, it's not scheduled by the next court date, then maybe issue another ordinance, or. At least the vehicle, I mean, the, the grant, it's got, I don't think it's going to get too high for a while now, being true, or, or I guess we'll see after the rain.
What's happening with the hideaway, is everybody know?
Well, yeah, it's in foreclosure. And, and there were some problems through the process because the current gentleman had a lien on the.
Property?
Property, and so the original owner wants it back, there's new buyers, there's new everybody to set up, it's just, it's in the system.
Okay. Anything else? Court report, I guess we talked enough about the courts. You have anything to add to?
Yeah, no.
A C O report, anybody have any questions, comments on that?
Questions. Uh, on, August ninth, did that, uh, bat have rabies? It said it was being tested, did we ever get an answer?
No, I see.
Yeah. And then, I like the last one, picked up and prepared a raccoon for rabies testing. So preparing a raccoon for rabies testing, was that like chopping the head off?
Yeah, taking it, incapacitating it, yeah. That it, anybody have anything else on that? Okay, looking for a motion to, uh, doc, uh, accept the consent agenda, the police department report, DPW report, township clerk report, zoning and code enforcement report, the court report, and A C O report.
I'll make the motion.
Second, any further questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Darsing?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yeah. Committee reports, Lillian, you have anything?
No.
Bill? Open space?
Well, you have a. Bid recommendation from uh, the open space committee to purchase ten trees. But they're going to use in the parking lot that separates the two, you know, and it's, there's four sides, so uh. Looks like uh, plant farm, you know, it's going to be the, well, it's not the cheapest, but if we go to Tuckahoe. With the cost of going down there and back and forth and, you know, using labor, you know, the fostering employees. So, we are recommending plant farm for uh, quantity of ten for four thousand, four hundred dollars. So, I will make that motion that we.
Go ahead, go ahead, make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Somebody want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, questions, comments?
Who? Who is going out there to verify the caliper of those trees?
I'm going to turn to Joe.
The caliper trees, the platforms that they're going to be in the area that three to three and a half.
I understand that's what they said, but my question is, who is actually going to verify that?
I'm not sure.
Are you?
Well, I certainly am, and I do have a caliper device, I haven't, I haven't seen it in like forever, but I could probably track it down, but uh. Uh, I, I'm just slightly concerned, I mean, that's a big tree. And, you know, is that, does he have to go burlap and ball them because they're out in the field that's growing?
I have no idea.
That's a rather large tree to have inventory on. Just sitting in balls above ground.
Hmm.
And I'm just kind of curious as to. You know, the other companies were all, that's kind of standard, what you find in a nursery, even wholesale nursery, you know, you can find bigger ones, but um. I'm just kind of curious about the caliber.
I don't know if he has them, or if he's going to.
Or if he's going to go get them, okay, gotcha.
Going to bring them to us.
Well, I guess that might be the next question to find out. Because I do know. There are two different ways to measure the caliber of the trees, and one I'm not a big fan of, but in theory it's the right one. I just think it's, you know, normally, I try to go knee-high, you know, versus ankle-high. Because I think they're two completely different measurements. But if you read the book, it's ankle-high measurement. Which is why I always thought the ones that got planted at Thomas Stewart Park were too small. But. I, uh, I'll figure that out, we'll figure it, call Fanny and see what that one is, if he's bringing them in or if he's got them.
Anyone else? Roll call?
Uh, I have recreation.
Oh, no, we got to finish this phone.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Mayor Darsing?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Or the only other thing I have is the uh, Cancer Society Relay for Life, uh, that I believe will be. Either early spring. I believe it's in May that they have it, they want to have it up at the Thomas Stewart Park. We're just mulling it around now, you know, so there's a lot of questions that's still that we have, that we need answers for, so we'll. Bring that back into near future, and I know there's um, you know, concern about it going past the dusk. So, and that was brought up at our open space meeting, so. Um, yes, if we make an exception for one, do we make an exception for?
Yeah, that's the problem, so.
So, I, I will be back to you guys on that one.
In fairness, I. If, if you're uh. It's fair, that you probably should tell them that. I, I guess I should talk for everybody, but it's probably going to be, you don't tell.
Right.
It's going to go after us, just give them a heads up, so if they wanted to go somewhere else and start looking, I can.
So, can I, can we kind of like get a little opinion from everybody on this committee? I mean.
We have to do a formal vote on that, or can everybody just speak their mind? We're actually making a decision, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So.
So. I'll make them.
I, I think the most, the motion would be that we don't want to deviate from the rules we were setting when we opened Thomas Stewart Park, basically.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any further common questions? I mean, it's a good cause, we're, we're obviously want to help these, yeah, cancer society, I mean, you know, but I, I just. Like, we're just feel we're opening a can of worms, you know, it's so. Roll call.
Mayor Darsing?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
And Brian, I'll bring up the lease on the fields on the uh, billboard.
Okay.
Well.
Okay, you done, Joe?
I'm done.
Well, on that note, um, recreation's thinking about having a movie night October twenty-eighth. After dusk, and it looks like six thirty, is, I, I just looked it up, six thirty is really the time, so it'd probably be. Say five thirty to eight thirty to be safe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they would need the pavilion, and uh, it, it would be a movie night for the kids.
We, we have done this, and we discussed this before, if, if it's a township organization, we don't mind deviating from, from policies. Outside organizations, just still, we lose control when we do that, so, I mean, that's my opinion, so. You want to make a motion, every loud and clear?
Yeah, I'll make a motion um, for the recreation committee to use um, Tom Stewart Park, October twenty-eighth. From five thirty to eight thirty. And the use of the pavilion. For a movie night.
I'll second, anybody else had any comments or questions on that? Roll call.
Mayor Darsing?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The board event actually is under committee report.
Oh, is it?
Do you want to go on to that?
Yeah, sorry about that, okay, Joe.
You're done?
I'm done.
Okay.
So, I, in your packets, there were just some minor changes to the um, lease agreement for the fields in front of the school. There was a, I don't have it with me, but there was a concern, are we going to have tournaments there or whatnot, and, you know, it was, right from the beginning, it was. There was a, I don't have it with me, but there was a concern, are we gonna have tournaments there or whatnot, and you know, it was, right from the beginning, it was. We're just gonna keep doing what we're doing, but we wanna be able to be able to improve the fields, uh, maybe put some backstops in. And see what other grants are available, and we can't do that unless it's on our roster list. So, um, these were changes and very minor. So.
I get the impression that we're enthusiastic about this, this whole year. This whole.
They got, they got bigger.
My fish, yeah, my question is, are we better off? I mean, do we have the money or is it too expensive? I mean, we could all just put baseball fields in Thomas Stewart Park and forget about it?
I don't know, could be pricey.
I'm sure it's gonna be pricey, but, yeah. I mean, I just get the impression the school board's not thrilled about this.
No, they, they, they have no problem, you know.
The first time I voted on it, that's what I heard, and I've heard nothing but problems about it.
So, no, I think, well, I think you're gonna get some opposition if we try to put baseball fields over on Thomas Stewart Park. Cause everybody likes all that open space and, you know.
I think it would just be too many fields, we would have to find, right now, it's, uh, what is it, two softball fields really we're looking at. Softball field or hardball.
We talked about putting them in originally, but baseball was down at that time.
Yeah, well, baseball's in phase two.
Yeah.
Of that, um, but we didn't have any.
The girl softball is.
You can't have, so baseball uses grass, right? Grass infield.
Right.
Softball's dirt.
Dirt, right.
You don't really wanna, and low path, a, a bunch of fields have just dirt, but you.
We're gonna, you're gonna grass that infield with Decker?
Um, no, that's good, uh, the, it's such as to leave it, uh, skin.
Okay.
They're gonna do, keep it like.
I don't have a mound, a permanent mound on it.
That's what you're doing with the grant. That was the request. I think the last email Tina sent was, I, I saw it, was, was fine. I think their main concern that I got. Um, was that, that they were worried about the playground.
Right, right.
And I mean, we.
Playground's open twenty-four seven.
Right, exactly, nothing changed. And that's why I get the impression there's more to this than, than this lease. I, I'll vote yes tonight, but if it comes back next time, I'll vote no.
This came from them though, right? Bill?
Yes, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, they gave us a change.
We need a motion for. Lisa highlighted in red, I'll make the motion to accept the revised, the lease agreement with the Board of Education.
Anybody want a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, I'm gonna vote yes, but as I just said, if it comes back, I'll vote no, because I don't think they're thrilled about this. That's my impression, alright? There's something more to, there's something more to this. I don't know what it is. I will meet, uh, so if it comes back, I'm voting no.
Okay.
Anyway, anyway, roll call.
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenneth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Bill Paul, you have anything?
Uh, yeah, just a, a couple side notes, um. Again, the squad's big fundraiser is in two weeks on the seventh, but, uh, this is more working with the Environmental Commission, um. Bob and I, the other day, had sat down and had a conversation on a couple of different things. But one of the things that they're going to look into, and it was certainly my suggestion, but it's been, uh, uh, on Bob's mind for a while. Because he's done some previous research, um, we need to find out, uh, what Warren materials is emitting into the air. Um, because there shouldn't be any grandfathering about particulates and things of that nature, but their current testing is self. And we're not sure when the last time the state has actually come in and tested it and what their records are. Uh, not that there's been a slew of complaints, but there have been a couple of complaints, um, and I think some of us who have lived up there forever. Don't really notice it, but there are some new residents up in the heights, and they are concerned about the black dust that is landing on their cars. Uh, um, again, I don't personally recall, but I park under maple trees. I may, that may not be as noticeable, right? On there's been a couple of phone calls to the EPA and stuff like that.
You can actually see the black.
You, you could, uh, well, the particulates, no, right, right. Yeah, no, there, there's been a couple of specific times where the particulates were there. And Bob is also throwing a, a big red flag of how they're dealing with, uh, milled asphalt. And the volume of milled asphalt that's being stored there. Um, because if you remember, at one time, millings were hazardous material, and then all of a sudden. You know, certain people in the industry pushed back and all of a sudden, millings were safe. So there's some questions that are going on there, um, so the Environmental Commission is gonna undertake that research. Make the phone calls to the state and get to see what testing and monitoring's being done. Because in, 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 one of the conversations we've had is, the plant that went up in Bloomsbury is zero emissions, but everybody, we can still smell the well. Odor isn't necessarily a, a, an immediate smell from live top, but there's zero emissions, it's being tested.
That's in, uh, low pad.
Low pad, I run Strikers Road.
Right.
Which is kinda funny how that recently changed hands to the big boy up here in the north. You know?
Who has it?
Uh, Silcon has it now. You know?
Who had it before?
A company from South Jersey, um, but apparently they lost the Morris County Co-op, decided it wasn't in their best interest. And Silcon was more than happy, come in and suck it up, right, Mike?
I, this is all news.
Silcon, no, not surprised, yeah, but anyway, so. The, this plant is, had, it has a particulate spring. That catches particulates before it supposedly gets out of the, the smoke sack. Um, you know, the, the white smoke you see is just water vapor, but we don't know what's really coming out of there. The state unfortunately hasn't really tested it, according to Bob, in a while. We haven't seen a current, so. They're going to undertake and contact all parties involved to see what's exactly going on up there.
Could we, can we request the EPA to do it? Can we?
Well, i- if Bob needs us, if Bob needs us to do that and he can't get that information, then certainly.
Bob Beckerson?
Bob Beckerson.
Legitimate concern.
Well, and part of the other.
Ridiculous on my car.
Well, and the other thing, and I mean, this is kind of an older one, but I certainly think it comes in. Different types of cancers can sometimes show up in clusters from different industries, you know, there's all kinds of tests and stuff like that. And there's been a long running history with some that, uh, prostate cancer in men and, and women. In that general neck of the woods was always a little bit higher than the average would have thought. But again, this occurred many, many years ago. Most of those people have all passed away, not necessarily from that, by the way.
Yeah.
Um, but there's big conversations that it really ran a little bit high in that neighborhood. Um, but with some of those guys, you know, one was a farmer, one worked in a gas oil ran all his life. I, i- i- you know, you, you can't necessarily label it, but it was always thought to have come from.
I'd say next month, let's have an answer from Bob, and maybe we'll have, Mike sent a letter and ask him. It doesn't cost anything to send a letter, really, I mean, maybe we'll just do it.
But anyway, so that, that's a project the Environmental Commission's about to undertake and so. And I think it was a worthy project.
Okay, that it, Paul?
Yep.
Everybody else done? One of the committee reports? Professional report, but now he's not here.
He has, he, he sent an email. Everybody but me. He sent me a text, reference to his email. I looked through, I don't, I said, I never got it.
And, and with that being said, too, one of Mike's projects that we gave him, and he was supposed to follow up with me, he told me he was gonna follow up with me. Was, we wanted him to send a letter to the county clarifying some sign usage.
Oh, yeah.
Um, well, he never did, he never did, he never did. Um, I actually went down there and took some photos.
Yeah.
I showed Lisa, Lisa downloaded them. We're actually gonna send the letter out of Lisa's office. Probably should've got together, done it a week ago, but we're gonna send the letter out of, uh, Lisa's office and, and take care of it from there. And they got some great signage down there and everything else like that, I just think it's all in the wrong direction.
Okay, so we need to talk about the rebound wall we're in, we're waiting for stuff.
No, no, I gotta work back, and it's too big of an undertaking for, uh.
Pre-cast?
So I'll have to go out.
Okay.
Okay. Has anybody heard any more on Dominguez property? From Frank?
No, I have not, no.
Okay. Okay, anybody need to discuss anything from this email then?
Yeah.
Okay. Mike, everything for you, executive, I guess?
Executive, just one thing, cause I know it's on, is you have a copy of the cannabis ordinance that Mister Tipton had forwarded to me. And then Lisa provided me, and I think she gave it to the committee, a copy of one done by our planner. I kinda like the one done by the planner better. It's got some more stuff. They both ba- basically say the same thing. And then Seth Tipton sent me comments today, which I don't know if you guys saw, I forwarded it to you late this afternoon. I, I don't have a problem with his, so it's just up to the committee. He, I sent him the one that our planner had done. And he said, look, they both basically say the same thing. I just, he just had three suggestions on it, like one dealt with the drive up. The one was, the planners had used different zones, whereas his only said one, which I think we wanna let, well, that's committees. My thoughts were that I thought the committee wanted to limit it to one zone, um, and then there was one third suggestion. So what we could do tonight is we could, depending what the committee wants to do, we could have the very simple one that we got from Mister Tipton originally. Or the one from our planner, I think is better, cause it does have more, you know, protections in it, and, and it says basically the same thing, so it's not gonna scare. Anybody off that wants to, and I did talk to Seth Tipton about that. He goes, no, he goes, I think they both say about the same thing. He said, I'm just gonna send you a couple of suggestions for the committee to consider if you adopt that one. So if you choose to adopt the other one, we could just, uh, introduce it tonight, and then if you decide, we want two of the three suggestions. None of them or three of them, we could just add those in, and then it'll be ready for second reading and public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, good.
And then I do have other stuff, executive.
Okay.
Old business, anybody have any other old business? I, I wanna talk, um, since Shannon's here, I just noticed Shannon, the interest rates, did they go down as of August thirty first, down to one point nine?
No, that's what we were, that was discussed in the original email back when we started this, one point nine.
Can we go back and ask?
No, I can do whatever.
Interest rate is still up, and they're planning on not going down until twenty twenty-five, I believe, after the last, um. And the other thing, see if we can use the interest to date in the general trust. Tax collector and the current, can we connect, go into the general fund next year? I wonder.
Well, the tax collector does go into the current fund.
Okay.
Because the money that's in the tax collector account basically just transfers to the current fund, and that's how we pay all those.
So the current account has almost twenty-seven thousand in there, so.
Yeah.
We can use that next year, that twenty-seven thousand?
Yeah, it's an anticipated revenue, yeah.
Meaning? Okay, all right. Anybody else?
New business, anybody have any new business to bring?
I, just, just one thing, it's, and this would require the chief and some thoughts, and, and I shared this with a couple of people, but. Twenty-five, thirty years ago, um. When you drove to South Jersey by way of five thirty-nine, you got to a community called Allentown. Uh, you know, just like a hope kinda thing and everything, and county road through there, and this and that. And they had a citizens group. Start to take, uh. What's the word I wanna use? A survey on your way home on Sunday afternoons. And it backed traffic up for miles. And the, the basic question was, if there was another route other than through the center of Allentown, would you take it to get to I ninety-five, the turnpike? And, you know, and you answered it this way or anything, well, lo and behold, you know, fifteen years later, there's a route. From five thirty-nine to I ninety-five, but I think part of the thing is they were doing it weekend after weekend. And I was going down to work at my mom's house at the time, so I'd run into it, Sunday afternoons all the time, and I was like, it, it occurred to me that. Couldn't a citizens group kinda do that here in regards to only. Asking the truck drivers? What brought you through a ten-ton zone, knowing that you're overweight? And it's, it's not something that we could turn over to the P D initially on. I think we could turn over the information to them if there's a second track. But initially, slow them down and ask them, you know, why are you coming through town here? Are you, you well aware that this is way restricted roads now? I don't think the town can necessarily partake in that, but could a citizens' action groups do something like that? I don't know, I mean, that's really, I don't know that you could stop people.
Well, they gotta stop here at the stop sign.
It's delayed traffic, so it's, uh, got online.
Delaying illegal traffic. The law probably says legal, probably says legal, you can't interfere with legal. That's how it say illegal.
I'm not. Listen, I think, yeah, I think if you, if the citizens' group got a permit from the town, and they said, we're gonna be at this intersection or that intersection or whatever, and the town granted them a permit. As long as they don't violate the law, you know, it, it's easy for me to say, cause it's a headache for the chief.
No, no, right, 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 right. Well, I mean, just, you know, because one of the, one of the big excuses that, well, my GPS brings me through here. Well, it doesn't matter, you're not supposed to come here. There's a big sign, you know, everywhere into this town that says you can't be here. So what shows, why did you decide to? And that we will be forwarding this information on to our local authorities, but we can't, obviously, they're not gonna write a meticulous spot or swear to it. But, you know, again, maybe some awareness. I'm just throwing that out there.
No.
I remember the, remember what happened down there in Allentown and, and, and I know what the chief said about cannot impede. Be legal or illegal traffic. We sat there for hours. Yeah, you know, to, to get through this task, you know, so.
Certainly is a good way to skew the survey, too.
On Strikers, they can just keep walking back and forth.
Well, uh, again, it had to be where somebody was safe to crosswalk, right? Where it's somebody's safe, you know, you, you can't put them in jeopardy, which is why I think it would need to be done where there's a stop sign. But again.
You have no ability to stop them otherwise.
Right, yeah, otherwise, right. So I'm just throwing that out there, food for thought, mull it over. Y'all think it's, may something to think about, maybe, if not, no big deal, just, you know, throw it in a crazy poll beam box.
No, it's, but I mean, those type of ideas are what, you know what I mean, like thinking out of the box, and it's, look, if somebody is gonna do the, the bucket brigade, right? And that they get a permit, whether it's a squad or somebody else, they set up on the road, so if somebody's doing a survey, and again, there's. Trucks on roads they shouldn't be on.
Whether they participate in the survey or not, it's another question. Right, cause I mean, there's lots of people that certainly comment, social media, and maybe they'd be willing to get together a private citizens' group and. You know, I'm just, just throwing it out there.
It all comes down to what I've, of my observation has been around here lately. Is what New York City has had for fifty years in reverse, like, they stopped enforcing. The turnstile jumps, jumpers in the, in the subways, they stopped writing infractions on the sidewalks. For litter and stuff like that, they started allowing the windshield wipe, uh, cleaning and stuff at those intersections. And that creates larger crime, that's no secret. And then I see traffic wise around here. From this. Philosophy around the country of, we don't have to follow any rules and walls, that's transcending down to traffic. I see cars all the time on twenty-two left lane and, they couldn't care less. Who's behind them, how many cars behind them, and they're going forty miles an hour, the fifty mile an hour zone, like, nothing you can do to make. Trucks get off the seventy-eight, going up to the warehouses, ride the left lane the entire time.
Yeah.
They couldn't care less who they're blocking, trucks coming off seventy, making the illegal left into the Penn Jersey Truck Stop. Totally ignoring the no left signs, so. We, we just have a whole attitude in the country of lawlessness, so these truckers are getting off, they don't care about the sign. They don't care about the law, they just don't care because that's the culture of our country right now, is that. We don't have to follow rules and walls and regulations. I see it every day with traffic getting worse and worse. On twenty-two and other streets around here, not just the truckers, cars too. This total disregard of any, any traffic regulations, it's, it's, it's sad, nobody, nobody cares.
How are they gonna get to that New Brunswick avenue warehouse?
Wherever they want.
Other than make that illegal left, are they gonna go down to the Walmart line?
Yeah, in theory, they're supposed to go down and use Greenwood Street down to Bliss Avenue and across.
Cause that joke handled right there by that target, it's not gonna be able to.
They're gonna use it.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna use it.
They could care less about signs or laws.
That's gonna. Come all the way out.
But.
Oh, yeah, they'll be back, they'll be backed up to seventy-eight. Poor planning.
Anything else?
Under, under old business, no.
No, just a new business.
Well, okay, uh, well, yeah, that's why I crossed it off. Well, under, um. Eight H, a discussion on the housing ordinance?
I think Frank and and. Brian, you brought it up when Frank was on the committee.
Yeah, I don't remember when I brought her up, it was probably two years ago.
So. Mike, is there any way that we can? Limit the number of families that live in the house?
Well. Because with the new house, with the affordable housing coming and with. What's, you know, we just had forty five thousand people in the last five days enter the country down in one town, you know. They're coming. I had it in college, because it was due against me. I didn't know if we could, if that was in Pennsylvania, I don't know if we.
Yeah, now the law, you know what? I'm sure we've done a number of memos on this because i- if you're, basically, the law is if you. Treat yourselves as a family unit, so everybody in the house could be unrelated, but if you eat meals together and stuff like that, because. A lot of, as you can imagine, down at the shore, a lot of town passed ordinances to prohibit that. You used to be able to do that. You can't really do it anymore. Um, and there's there's standards. What I can do is, I know we've done memos for other towns on this particular issue now. Stacking becomes a different issue, where you see like twenty pairs of boots, you know, in the house that, you know, you were like four people. And then. Just my own personal experience with that is that they get smart pretty quick and go, oh, I got my relatives visiting, or I got this or got that. And um. You know, I don't know that you're there yet, but you know, you could do. Landlord licensing ordinances, if you have rental properties that they have to be inspected once a year, and so you start getting into some heavy duty regulation. The best thing I always found was, you know, if there was a fire call, you know, where the police had to go somewhere and they would report back and say, hey. There's a house where they've got, you know, twenty people, there's mattresses and closets and blah, 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 and all sorts of stuff like that. But. It it, so there's a lot of regulation that you can do, it's just really tough unless you stay on top of it, if people start abusing it. And and it's amazing. What the state regulations are as far as how much space you need for one human being, like, it's unbelievably small, like, not what you think, yeah. And um. But but so anyway, the the short answer is there are things you can do. Um, but. Back in the day when they were trying to regulate, like. You know, shore houses where a bunch of people would, you know, try to outlaw those. They've made it much more difficult. But I'll get a memo to everybody, because like I said, we've done this before. It's not reinventing the wheel.
So my concern is, you know. The increase in the school population. You know, if I, I'm gonna have four kids with three different last names. You know, coming from the same address. You know. Oh, I want my, I want my kid to go to my sister's house, because Greenwood is a great school district and I'm living in. Wherever, you know, how how do you regulate that?
Well, I think when you register for school, you know, there's certain documents that they require to make sure you do it. You're always gonna have.
People don't have to go around that.
Yeah, there's, there's people that try to cheat. They'll go stay with a relative in the other town or whatever, but um, you know.
So what are all you know?
I I I don't.
You find out if you're doing that anyway.
Yeah.
School's not gonna share information, are you?
Well, when we see an influx and they're complaining, then we'll, we'll worry about it then. So on the affordable housing units, can we go in like twice a year when we change the clock and go and say we're gonna change the batteries? Make sure the batteries and the smoke detectors and I don't know, the carbon dioxide, that. In in the buildings that have more, anything over four units is inspected by the state.
Okay.
So, and I don't know the frequency of those inspections. I know, I think they do it every five year general inspection, but I'm not sure what they do with regard to like. I I don't know.
We do it on a local level.
Um, I think if you're inspected on the state level, you can't inspect on the local level, but our local. Fire official would probably go in there. I'm sure that. When you get into multiple unit buildings, that there are different regulations where maybe they have to go in once a year and do the inspection to make sure that the fire extinguishers are operational. And the smoke detectors, I I can check, I don't know, I've got my head. Bill, in in. And I certainly think what you're talking about certainly refers to other properties, but when it comes up to the affordable, they've got a management team on site. You know, that knows who's there and who's not there. And I think that's gonna be regulated, because this group is, they're managing twenty thirty other affordable houses.
What about the one on one seventy three? I didn't know they were gonna have management.
Yeah, no, that's all part of the the deal.
They'll have management.
They'll have that, they they have a management onsite.
At least eight hours.
Uh, right, right, exactly, because they've got to verify employment, credit, all that good kind of stuff. You know, so I don't know that those two particular sites might be a problem. There are certainly other sites here in town. That that are 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 an issue, um, but uh. At least I think those two will be okay.
And 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 I will just tell you this, my experience has been, it's not usually, usually the landlords do a pretty good job of policing that, because they don't want it takes. Their asset gets diminished if you have too many people in there, right? And they're already, they're getting X rent, so they don't want any more people that have to be in there, so. You're always gonna have the bad apples, but on those managed units and stuff like that, they're not gonna want any more people in there than are permitted to be in there. And again, because it's affordable housing, they're taking people off of the list, you know, and they're, so they know exactly who they're taking. You know, so I think. You probably have more safeguards with people off the affordable housing list than you do on regular apartment complexes.
Right, because. Or or in this case, just duplexes.
Yeah, yeah, or or single family homes.
Yeah, sure, yeah, right, right, right.
And while we're on affordable housing, any. Santini just pointed up there.
Yeah, I see that he did. He probably shouldn't have. I was under the impression everyone would break ground.
Yeah.
Anytime.
Last meeting, we were talking about their full in permits.
Right, yeah, so.
Okay, we're done.
We're done.
Okay. Looking for a motion to adopt resolution seventy three twenty three refund of overpayment taxes on block twenty three oh three lot twenty two. And resolution seventy four twenty three refund of overpayment taxes, block thirty four oh two lot twelve. Anybody wanna make that motion? I'll make it. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, discussion, roll call?
Mayor Barson, Mr. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth.
Yes.
Mr. Nick, yes.
Is this second reading for this ordinance ready to go for stopping and standing?
No.
Okay, so we're not.
The county, right, the county, and I called Alex Zorzek again, I'm waiting for a call back. They say they want to give us a description of the. Right, uh, anyway, I don't want to comment on, but anyway.
We just go through a second reading of thoughts, right?
Right.
We don't have to do anything about it.
But we could carry it.
We can carry it?
If they don't make subsequent changes.
Yeah, you could, that's right, we talked about.
If it don't make.
Yeah, I would carry it to the next meeting, because the changes they're gonna make are gonna reduce the scope of it. So I I think we'll be okay to do it on second.
We can get it in then in November.
Right.
Yeah, because really, November, December.
Cause they wanna like, it's it's just gonna shorten. I had the full length of, we had the full length of, so. Um, yes, so I think we just carry it the next.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to introduce ours number one eleven twenty twenty three lead based paint inspections. Anybody wanna make that? Motion?
I'll make it.
Everyone second? I'll second. Questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Uh, well, let's go comment wise. I know that Lisa's, I don't know if she's talked to everybody. This is something that we have to introduce, it's mandated by the state, but this really. Who's doing it? Exactly.
Yeah, it's an unfunded state.
What are we gonna create a whole?
Is it like anything else, they require the home purchaser or seller to do it?
So I was really hoping that I could talk my thing to.
She she worked me, but it's the statute requires us to, you know, you can't put the burden on the owner, unfortunately. This one and the same thing with the business registry, insurance registry, it's another state mandate, no pay.
With the lead in over the next month, I did get one business card from one company that is out there doing it. I I don't see how we can possibly do this in-house and.
Oh, no.
Um, have Jeff trained or anything like that. I've really, we've worked this because we've been trying not to introduce this, but. I think, you know, I'll bring to the committee, hopefully one or two, and whatever the cost is. They'll be our agent. And then the property owner, if they can find somebody to do it cheaper.
Some donor owns a lead.
Yeah.
Any house built before seventy eight's got lead painted, you know, and as long as you don't eat the paint chips.
Yeah.
Or sand it and get it airborne.
This would be like the uh. Radar in the eighties and nineties. Somebody will make a lot of money off of this. Well, anyway. We have first and second, that's it, roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes. Looking for a motion to introduce stories number one twelve twenty twenty three businesses shortage registry. Anybody wanna make that motion? It's another requirement we have to do. I'll second. Comments, questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yeah.
Mr. Nick, yes.
I was gonna ask for the motion for introduce or it's one thirteen twenty twenty three. I'll make that motion to introduce, would anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
And let's say, would anybody want to have a discussion on this?
Yes, probably, but I really didn't get a chance to. I mean, I read through it, but. An hour ago. You know, so. I mean, it seems to be A okay, but there was a lot to process there.
Well, we always have to do a second reading.
Right. Right, right.
Sensitive too.
Yes. Well, anybody else have any comments, questions, discussion on it? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Nick, yes.
Uh, and looking for a motion to introduce ours number one fourteen twenty twenty three amendment zoning for the cannabis. Retail sales, so they. Anybody wanna?
Now, now that's the the short version.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll make that note. This is the one you recommended.
Well, no, no, I like the other, I like the one the planner gave us. I I would do second, the the other version with the changes that, right, you have no problem with the changes. As long as you don't have any problem with the changes that uh, Tipton suggested, which is, we don't have to adopt those either.
Yeah.
But it was limited to one zone. Uh, a drive through, because he said people that are not ambulatory that have to, you know, have prescriptions or whatever. And that's up to the committee. The state encourages a lot of towns, this the standard uh. One does not have.
Let's have hours of operation. I didn't see that in there. I see drop off hours, but I didn't.
I thought it did.
That it, I might have just missed it.
Where's that?
Yeah, there's. Oh, that's, that's a drop, I saw a drop off, I didn't see hours of operation.
Well, that's a short one, I don't think I can go longer. Yes, from eight to nine P M, seven days a week.
Yeah, I saw that. Delivery.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's something we need to add or discuss or.
Yeah, so that was one of the things that I highlighted that might, you know, you might want to consider adding to the original version.
Twenty four hours now.
Is that in our second, the one the planner?
Twenty four hours.
The version the planner did, the one I like better, and I think you like that better too, right, Lisa? That one has hours of operation. What were the hours? Nine A M to eight D M.
Actually says daily.
Lisa, which one is the planner?
I wrote right on the top that it's a, like a Bloomsbury sample.
Oh, okay.
It's numbered. So also, you know, if you like the. The basic outline, but you find things in there that you just want us to add. To the original.
I have that one.
Either way.
I mean, I definitely like to discuss the hours of operation.
Well, I know that one in Pittsburgh, I went down that way the other day and it was. I think about nine o'clock at night and they were still open.
They're just always busy.
No. The line never ends, like, like a Disney roller coaster. What page, what page is all the hours on? Uh, operating hours, the recall should be nine A M to eight P M daily.
What page?
Three, five, dude, number two.
Number two.
Nine to eight.
Page five?
Yeah.
On the Bloomsbury now. Yeah, I would like to discuss that.
Is this a regulated industry, just like alcohol? So like. If you're having a problem, you could readdress this at your date, correct? If you're having a problem with hours or something, you could do that.
They have a license from the state.
Okay.
So, um, just like alcohol, you could always put restrictions on later if you're having an issue, correct? Uh, yes, I believe so. I I think it's just treated the same way.
Yeah. But I'm not that I'm not suggesting that, but I.
No, I mean that.
But and and remember, the purpose of this is they, they're interested, they want to make sure that the town's interested in it before they move forward and, you know.
Right.
Et cetera, et cetera. I I think ultimately, because if this, if if one was to go in the redevelopment zone, we would negotiate a redevelopment agreement and you can.
Hours.
Negotiate.
Certainly negotiating. Hour restrictions?
Absolutely. And and by the way, as you know, because it's a zoning, we gotta send it to the land use board, they're gonna get a chance to to comment on it. And would that be said off the top of your head? Am I eligible to partake in the voting of this particular one?
Yeah, okay, because I know I get. Bumped out of certain things.
Use variances, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but on this side.
As far as commenting on a zoning ordinance, no.
Well, that way, as the mayor's rep, I can bring in. Certain things that TC wants.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Cause I know sometimes I get to have to. Wait, wait a motion and a second on that, correct?
Um, I, I'm sorry, I have Bill as the motion, I don't have a second.
Yeah, but that was on the short one, don't we want to change the number, or is it the number change stays the same? Stay the same and Lisa and I'll. With the Bloomsbury one in.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on it? Roll call.
With the caveats that they suggested.
With with the changes they suggested, those three.
From uh, Seth from today.
I said.
Sorry, I just want to make sure we're on the same.
We had proposed to use it a single zone, so I think we just wanted to be two zones. So I think they're right about that. So this will make sure it's just the B two zone. Um. This has a limit, it doesn't allow drive-throughs, and we want to allow a drive-through. Now, they could always go to the board and get a variance for a drive-through, or if it's in a redevelopment, if somebody were to come in in a redevelopment zone. They could negotiate that with the land use board.
Well, I was gonna say, I've seen two dispensaries and neither one have a drive-through. Now, well, I guess it's matter of location and whether you could like. And the one that I saw in Maplewood didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, those two, yeah, their areas are a lot locked, really.
I mean. Be quite frank, I'm not real thrilled about the retail. I mean, I I have. For medicinal purposes, I have no issue with it. Recreational use, I I do have some reservations based on my background and stuff, but uh. It's gonna be, whether it's there or a hundred yards in another direction, it's gonna be out there.
Right.
So uh. But. I mean, you can only regulate as much as you can regulate. I mean, either acknowledging it as a business or you're not, you know, I mean. And what was the third one, Michael?
Third one was, um, I would suggest reducing the amount of time that you will accept applications for resolutions of support or eliminating the process entirely. If Greenwood issues an announcement that is accepting applications, it will open season and the township may get inundated. There are many licenses with no locations that are desperate to find locations. Uh. So I mean. We could just remove it if.
We uh. What was he saying there? In simple terms there, that was a wonderful statement.
There's a time period set forth in the thing that says that we will accept applications or resolutions of support.[1712.21] Um, and then I guess he's just saying that there's, I guess the state has issued a lot of licenses, but there aren't a lot of locations where you can actually use them.
Right.
So he says you're gonna get inundated with applications, but.
So we could just. We could just remove that segment.
Is there, can we have an application fee, Bill Glass?
Orange is such a small area, like, that's the whole point. I don't think we need, I don't think that.
So there's saturation point, stay wide.
Yeah, yeah, so we could take that out, yeah. And by the way, I mean, it's an ordinance, so we could always amend it, you can tweak it down the road and. I mean, there may be some stuff that comes up between now and the second reading where the, the committee decides they wanna add some other stuff.
So, you know, talking about an application fee, but, you know, if we get six applications in, who am I to say, I like this one over that one? I don't have any expertise, you know? So maybe we shouldn't have an application fee. If I, a professional to, to determine, you know, the eligibility and, you know.
I could be wrong, but I, I'm under the impression that the application or the person's going to operate, this has already been identified by the owners. By, by, by the owners.
Oh, the owners of the project.
All right, I, I can, I can. So I don't know that there's even.
Has to come to us?
Okay, right.
Okay, we're ready for the vote or what? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah.
How's yours where we discussed, correct? Please agree with her baseball field, maybe that's new facility update. Joe, anything?
Yes, I got a text message from the engineer twenty-eightth of sixth, I grew up at the county on a, another issue. And they just, they asked, and they said that the county has, uh, indicated that we've com, they've completed the review and are issuing a letter next Tuesday. It is understood that the letter is going to be a conditional approval where they may be, uh, just a few minor items that need to be addressed. So that's a, that's a plus there, so we should hear something next Tuesday. And I've had a few conversations with the architect, uh, just cleaning up some paperwork and he's missed some emails where, where we'd already made some changes that he needs to put into this bet. So that's, that's a positive there for the.
So how close to going out to bid?
Probably if we get and see what the minor things are, that they allowed to go out to bid their package together. I can say end up over November. Cuz we've put all documents together, so no, no groundbreaking till spring. Over the winter here to, uh, do what need to do.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Shared service agreement with Somerset County, what is that?
Joe, that was your, um.
I requested that, um, with the shared service agreement, their D P W offers, uh, some training and stuff that'd be beneficial to the D P W. One of them is the new rules and regulation for C D L drivers. Anybody to be a C D L driver even for the township, I'd take a six thousand dollar class.
Okay.
You just can't go let somebody train you and stuff. That's the big one there, the one that, to help guys because there'll be a, a lower rate. They have an in-depth training, uh, group. It's a D P W, uh, shared services, so it opens up. If we need a large excavator, I know they have, I have friends that work down there. We could get an excavator and an operator for.
Yeah, I saw that. I just was, I just don't ever remember.
Probably the, the biggest used one that I'd like to use.
Okay, no, I have little issue with it. I just saw in my packet and I.
Joe, that, that training for C, uh, C D L drivers that we currently have, do they have to go through it or is it just for new?
No, it's, it'll be for new, new drivers and things like that, but there's also safety classes and stuff they, they honor periodically. I, that we need to pay.
So, I, I don't wanna belabor, we can talk about it afterwards. They're trying to eliminate potential new C D L drivers, one owners, this, that, or whatever?
No, they're just, the professional part of it, to have this class and stuff. Money draft, my opinion, money.
Yeah, wow.
If I wanted to get a C D L license.
You have to have this six thousand dollar class.
That's.
It's almost like, I guess, if you wanna say, I guess, uh, even the state has required, if I'm wrong enough, but new drivers, uh, young kids have to have, go to driving school.
Yeah.
Can't drive, can't drive with mom and dad anymore.
Right.
Yeah, and none of these kids are learning to drive when they're ten to fourteen like I did. Drove my dad around all through the mountains there. I knew how to drive standard shift when I was fourteen years old.
Yeah.
Does that apply also to school bus drivers?
Yes, oh, even, even more, they're, they're even more stringent.
Cuz, I mean, they're, they're desperate. It was just an article in the, uh, Lehigh Valley dot com about school bus drivers over in Easton. And you see, I forget where I was, going down twenty-three, some, I think it was Nazar, twenty-five hundred dollar signing bonus to be a school bus driver. And then.
Can't even get buses for like football games or baseball games, so they can't get drivers to drive their kids to the games and stuff. The real issue, okay.
Maybe I shouldn't have given up my C D L.
Okay, Thomas, throw by three quotes we discussed really for life we, okay, permit, uh, application for Trinity Solar. Chief, everything okay on that? So, we need, I'm looking for a motion to approve, uh, solicitation for an application for Trinity Solar. Anybody wanna make that?
I'll make it.
Anybody want a second? Any questions, comments, discussion, roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. We, uh, kept the new member of the fire company, Frank Momrock. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Chief, I assume everything, background, everything?
Yes, I background checked his friend Dom and had a conversation with Chief Palmer, and he's just got, waiting to go get his physical and stuff. He's a new recruit, so he has to be tried.
Okay, thanks. Anybody have any questions, comments, roll call, Lisa?
Um, Curly, you were the second on that one? Yes, okay. Uh, Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Yeah.
Bill had just brought up discussion for a holiday party. How are we looking on that? We, uh. We gotta be able to fork one?
Well, we canceled community day, so we have a thousand dollars. I think we're okay, right?
You think we can do it?
We'll make it work.
I mean, like, you guys are right here doing stuff, do a lot of time in the wreck and everything, I like to try to do something for them, but. There's a lot of people volunteer a lot of time. It, it's a lot of money, but it's not a lot compared to what they do, the hours.
Well, they save you, yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, so, you want us to do a, a vote to authorize you to contact Spain? Are we gonna do? Okay, you don't need anything, right, you just. Okay.
I think, can I bring something up though?
Sure.
Your people were pretty upset about the, um.
Coffee?
No, yeah. That was me.
About the twenty dollars for their spouse?
Yeah.
I didn't think last year we had many complaints about that. It was two years.
I didn't get any, but Lily and.
Oh, did you?
I think I know where that's from.
For more than one?
Person? That's so funny.
What, they had to pay the twenty dollars for their spouse?
For food like that?
Can we look?
Yeah.
I don't get this place, twenty bucks for two people, basically.
It's one of our own businesses, but no one's big enough to handle. Warren, Warren's side's not big enough.
I like she did it on a day that Warren signed this close. You know, and have them open up, but.
Yeah.
I haven't been down there in like forever.
Okay.
So I'll call them, uh, do we wanna look at, uh, certain dates right now? Do you guys wanna? Otherwise, I can.
Wouldn't we do the first Friday, uh?
No, I think we do the second for some reason.
I don't remember.
I wanna say, December ninth would probably be the week we would normally have done it.
Yes.
Is that a Friday?
The Saturday.
Oh, it's on a Saturday, okay.
I don't, do we do a Friday? I, I think it's the second weekend.
So I could ask about the eighth or see if they're available the eighth or the fifteenth?
Yeah, I guess. Let's go back and you see if I have.
Is that a Friday, the eighth and the fifteen?
Yeah.
It was a Friday started, Seth.
I was gonna make a joke.
I'll wait for executive.
We're good with that then, now?
Yeah.
Correspondence, where we discussed that basically, right? And no stopping standings on. Public comment, I'll make a motion, we'll open public comment. Anybody want a second?
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi, anyone for the public wishing to make a statement, come up to the.
I have one thing, Mayor, and I emailed about the, uh, the grant, the community, um, development block grant, the resiliency grant. Uh, since, and this, we didn't have no, uh, we didn't have no damage from Hurricane Ida, but Warren County qualifies any communities. And there's a grant in there, and this is under the hazard mitigation that makes us eligible to apply for a grant to help with the municipal building. It's using, uh, they said it's using the, uh, federal community development block grant disaster recovery. Monies from the, uh, U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. And there's up to five million dollars available per, per community. And it, it will cover, um, eligible projects or construction or reconstruction or infrastructure, installation of public works and other facilities. As they can municipal building, you know, in my hazard mitigation plan, I have had this municipal building because of the fire and police.
Right.
In it, because of the creek. Services should not be in a, in a designated hazard zone.
Yeah.
So if this is at a state level, the only, the only thing is, is finding somebody right to grant, have no good on it. What's that?
It sounded like.
This is state, state using federal money. So a disaster was declared, how it works through FEMA, disaster declared, it starts local just like this flooding. Goes to state, state pursues federal government, then the funds come from Fed, down the state, down the locals, then they have the resiliency or the hazard mitigation, same thing. We had a disaster, so try to fix so it don't happen again. So that's what this is, and, and that'll be next, but probably a year or two out from the flooding we had in July, afforded resiliency monies available to help fix so it don't happen again, the flooding in Warren County. This, this here makes us eligible because Warren County was part of the, well, Bergen, Essex, Gloucester, Hudson, Hunterdon, Mercer, Middlesex, Mars, the Sage, Somerset, Union, and Warren. Were all in that disaster.
Richard, Lisa, you have any ideas on who we can get to write it?
I nominate, uh, Rich's grant writer. She just did work, she gets a lot of money.
Period is June twenty-eighth to December fifteenth.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt.
I'm gonna make a motion that's. I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number seventy-five twenty-three?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Authorize, uh, the chief of the fire department, the O E M director, and the chief of police, the township administrator. Get together and make an application for those grants that Joe just mentioned. Anybody want a second?
And do you need to put?
Second.
That person's name on it?
No, we just authorized them to do.
Okay.
You second? Any other further questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Just Nick from it.
Yeah.
Any other public comment?
I just wanted to mention, I did mention to the mayor, uh, that I did put in the request to attend that thought violence grant that I, they up there funded through, to, uh, continue throughout the end of the school year at least, so maybe I can get at least, the very least, her salary paid, uh, and you can put all school year under that grant, since I have probably a hundred fifty thousand dollars left in that grant, and, uh, yeah, it's gonna be difficult to spend down, so, um, the request is submitted to my, uh, grant manager, with the, uh, uh, Department of Justice, so I'm just, uh, awaiting.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Anybody else? I make a motion, we close public comment?
Second.
On favor?
Didn't we just have her paid up until?
Up until, up until the end of this year, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session. Anybody want a second?
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
And that's to discuss two contractual matters.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we come back in public session. Anybody want a second? I can, all favor?
Hi.
Mike?
Uh, yeah, we merged from executive session eight forty-seven P M where we discussed two contractual matters. Um, one was regarding, uh, farm lease and the other was a, uh, uh, police matter. Norfolk slack was taken. Copy of these minutes will be available at such time as the committee determines there is no harm to the public interest.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, do we authorize the chief of police to take action as discussing executive session? Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yeah.
Ms. McDermott, yes.